Anyone who wishes to speak during the public comment on agenda items only, which happens towards the beginning of the meeting before we start talking about anything, please indicate so in the chat. So you can be added to the list. And I believe the intention is that you would have your name as your, your actual name so that they can find out, you know, find you to unmute you when it's your turn.
I can't control my video won't work.
Heather, you're not muted, just so you know.
Oh, now it is. Thank you.
I also, just before we got, get started, we're thrilled to have our fearless leader, Mr. Farback. We wanted to clear up some things about the chat before we got started. The chat is for two purposes and two purposes only. The first is to be able to sign up to speak. So you would just enter your name in there or just indicate that you want to speak, whether it be during the beginning period or at the end on non-agenda items. Every comment period, a person can speak one time. This paper, we had initially said two minutes, but we're sticking with the four minutes per person, per, per time. So the chat is to sign up to speak. The other reason the chat is open to everybody is to give an opportunity for people to state objections for sunshine law issues. Our solicitor will be, are supposed to be on the meeting again this evening. We, if the chat is being used to go back and forth between participants, doing other things that are just not useful or disruptive to the meeting, there will be one verbal warning that your actions or behaviors are disruptive to the meeting. If it continues, then you will be removed from the meeting and not let back in this evening. So that goes back to the idea that it's not to argue back and forth with other people. Questions asked in the chat will not be answered. And if you have a legal objection, you may state it in there. If we are inclined to respond to that based on the solicitor recommendation, we will do so. No response is an indication that your objection has been received and that no action is going to be taken on that at this time. So again, one verbal warning. If, if the chat is being abused, if it continues, that includes repeatedly entering the same objection over and over and again. But then that person will be removed from the meeting and we won't be answering any questions. So we do see that is in there. And so if that is posted again, that would be the first verbal warning for that objection being posted repeatedly. That's all I have. So.
Thank you, Holly. We'll call the main order and start with the pledge of allegiance. We have a flag open on the screen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item will be public comments on agenda items. If you're in the chat, Mary Jean, would you give them the first ones and we'll go from there?
George Yuhas has requested permission to speak. Mr. Yuhas, you've been unmuted. You have four minutes.
Mary Jean, I see you still showing muted on my screen. I don't know if that's you or him.
He has the ability to unmute himself.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Yuhas, you have the ability to speak. You can hit the unmute. Mr. Yuhas, I have made you a temporary co-host so that you can unmute yourself. You can unmute yourself. Mr. Yuhas, there's no reason you should not be able to unmute yourself. You are a co-host. If you just click on the unmute, you will be able to unmute.
Mary Jean, maybe you want to try somebody else and just see when come back to George, maybe? Try the next person who's asked to, to speak.
Sheila Donnelly. You're able to unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is my first time speaking at a board meeting. Am I supposed to state my name and address?
Yes, your name.
Sheila Donnelly.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, I wanted to address you. I understand I can always expect, expect the answer at this meeting. However, I also understand that it does cost the district money when we have to dig for answers. What is the actual reason for the virtual board meetings? And I would really like to meet in person. When do you plan on in-person meetings? The Pennsylvania Department of Health, there are exceptions to the covering requirement. Can I read them, please?
Yeah, four minutes.
Pennsylvania Department of Health, section three, exceptions to covering requirement B. If wearing a face covering would either cause a medical condition or exacerbate an existing one, including respiratory issues that impede breathing, a mental health condition or a disability. Also, section four, school entity obligations. Five, a school entity should not, A, enforce face covering requirements when there is an exception under section three, or if it is unsafe to do so. B, restrain use force or physically remove teachers, children, students, staff, or visitors who refuse to comply with this order when it would not otherwise be illegal to do so. C, violate other laws, including state and federal anti-discrimination laws. So we have been restrained from the building. And that's all I really have to say on that agenda item. I would like to speak at the end of the meeting, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we try George again? I see he's trying another phone.
Mr. Yuhas, we have unmuted you. If you switch a different phone, please, please let us know your username.
While he's switching phones, maybe we can move on to Shira's. Or whoever was next.
Shira Knight would like to speak. Shira, you are unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I would just like to say mine's, mine's pretty brief this week, but I know that on the agenda, we have in-person board meetings on the agenda. I would like to see a resolution to that and a vote that these board meetings be held at the school again. We have, two weeks ago, we had a meeting that said extracurricular activities would be happening at the school on the weekends, which I totally agree with. I think that's great. We should be having the school open. But in the meantime, we can't say, yes, let's have extracurriculars open, but no board meeting. By doing this via Zoom, you limit a lot of people. There are people here that don't have, in our district, that don't have good internet service. We have elderly people that may like to speak and may like to get this information that actually pay taxes, that have a right to this information as well. So I would just say that, you know, we all go to Walmart together. We all go to school together. We all go to these places in public together, yet we can't gather for a school board meeting. And I think that's, that's pretty, pretty poor. So I'm hoping that today we can get an agreement that we be back in the auditorium for these meetings. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have the next person?
Mr. Yuhas is able to use a chat box. For some reason, he can't use his audio.
That seems strange because everybody else seems to be able to. I don't understand that.
That is the last community member.
He has video, he says, but not audio. Video takes, usually takes more bandwidth than audio. So I don't understand that.
Mr. Yuhas, you can't share your video?
Can I offer a suggestion? Because when I logged on, I did not have audio either. So George, I went down to the microphone that's down in the lower left-hand corner and I hit the arrow button. And so a menu came up, a dropdown menu, and I checked. It wasn't on this originally when I couldn't get in, but I checked same as system. And then all of a sudden I had audio again. So I don't know if that would work or not. So it's the microphone in the left-hand corner. Click on the arrow button and choose under select a speaker same as system.
I just allowed a 570690 number in and he is saying that that's the number he is now on. So it only comes up as a phone number. Maybe it's that 3225.
I see it. Mr. Yuhas, so you're Howard's Galaxy?
Hello, it's Billy.
Oh, hey, Bill.
Holly. All right. Okay, I tried on my microphone. Okay, they didn't recognize my number. I cannot unmute myself. You have to do it.
Howard's Galaxy, you have been unmuted.
Guys, could you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
I took a video from his phone, from Howard's phone to show you when everybody was telling me to unmute. It just wasn't happening. So hopefully that was just a technical error and we'll figure that out later. But you're going to get a video. You're going to see my finger and you're going to see me trying. It was giving me a prompt saying I can either unmute or stay muted. And I was trying to unmute and it wouldn't let me unmute either way, but somebody will figure it out later. And who should I share that to, to help figure that out so that doesn't happen again? Who am I going to share that with?
George, why don't you send it to me and I will send it to our tech department?
Okay, and I appreciate that because they might be able to tell right away what that error was.
Yeah, I'd like to know why it switched off my speakers too.
Yeah, so I can hear you guys. I can see you guys. I can chat. When she told me to unmute, a box came up, says stay muted or unmute. And I was hitting the unmute button and it wouldn't let me unmute. And if I hit the little bottom left unmute button, it would prompt the screen and it would keep going in a circle. And it wasn't actually unmuting. It was just sending me in a circle and never unmuting. So anyhow, let's go on. Hopefully that wasn't any of my two minutes. Do I have time?
You have time?
Okay.
Four minutes.
How many minutes? I'm sorry. What was the minutes?
We're going to start it now.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so mine's going to be on the public commenting section alone. And I want to refer everybody to the 903 section. So the 903 section, the policy is going to say each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. You make it four. Thank you. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. So it's, it's supposed to be two minutes per topic. So if I want to talk about any of those agenda items, I have two minutes per agenda item, not two minutes or four minutes one time. It sounds like you guys are just trying to meet your, your sunshine law regulations and just shut the subjects up. But we're not subjects, we're citizens. And your policies that you took an oath to says exactly what I just said. Each statement made by the participant shall be limited to two minutes. You make it four. Thank you. In duration, no participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. So we get to speak per topic. And if nobody else is in line, we get to continue with another go. If it gets long, then the president can shut it down. But I always have more, two minutes and four minutes at one time is treating us like subjects and it's inherent to being frustrated with each other. So these got to be open. These are open meetings for a reason. We're supposed to be open, being able to talk, not just meet your criteria for sunshine violations. And you're not even following those because the Office of Open Records told you guys, open up. The Zoom meetings are done. And you guys don't give a reason. Does anybody have a reason why we're in Zoom meetings? Mr. President?
It's not a question and answer session.
Right, so I can refer my question to you. Who's going to answer that for me? Or is it going to take a four-year request and cost a district money? Who's, it's not an answer, but who's going to answer it later? Who shall I email to get that answer? I'm asking who I should email.
George, we're going to, that's an agenda item for today, so we're going to be discussing Zoom versus in-person. So maybe we want to just wait until we get to that point.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, John. Appreciate that. That's, John, you represent me, don't you?
Uh.
Toncanic County?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, John. That's all I have. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
No, we do not.
Okay, we're done. Okay, moving on to item four, approval of minutes from October 6th and October 13th. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, we have any discussion or comment? Hearing none. Carolyn, can you do a roll call?
This is Bennett.
Yes.
This is Gregory.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Dr. Proboala.
Yes.
Mr. Swilly.
Yes.
Mr. Widener.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes.
Mr. Farr.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Farr, do you want to announce the executive session?
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding me. Thank you for reminding me. We had an executive session prior to the meeting tonight to discuss some personnel issues. And Building Grounds in their committee requested a, another meeting in November. And we'd be like to have that on November 11th at, I think, seven o'clock, we decided.
And we're also scheduling a board meeting that night. That is not currently on the schedule.
Yes, we also do a board meeting as well. Add that in. Okay.
That'll start right after the Building and Grounds meeting at 7:30. So Building Grounds is seven, 7:30.
Very good time. Thank you. Business and Finance Reports, item five. We have items one through six. Do we have a motion for those?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a second. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Carolyn, please do a roll call.
This is Gregory.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Dr. Proboala.
Yes.
Mr. Swilly.
Yes.
Mr. Widener.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes.
Mr. Farr.
Yes. Okay, item six, the Superintendent's Report.
I would like a motion to approve items one and three through seven. Request that we table item two, which is the retirement of Mary Beatty. Mary has not changed her mind, but we just need to, we need to talk to John about some of the contract language and make sure that we have her vacation days calculated correctly and her last date calculated correctly. So that we called, that was called into question a little bit today upon closer reading of the Act 93 contract. So I intend to reach out to John tomorrow and Mary will resubmit the letter. So this doesn't really change that she's going to retire. It just clarifies, will clarify the date. So items one and three through seven is what I'm asking for.
Thank you. Your motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we've had two. That's a second. Any discussion?
No, I, I just want to say that we appreciate everything that Summer has done for us. And if she decides at some point, see, even my dogs are excited that, you know, if she ever decides to come back to Toncanic, Toncanic will be ready for Summer.
Yes, I think everyone was, has been happy with her.
Yes.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, Carolyn, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Dr. Proboala.
Yes.
Mr. Swilly.
No.
Mr. Widener.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett.
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory.
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold.
Yes.
Mr. Farr.
Yes.
Phil, before we move on, I would just, I want the, the minutes to reflect that Summer's last day in the district physically here would be December 23rd. Then she's, she has some of her flex days left and then her personal time. So her last actual date, once she spends that out, would be January 18th. So I just want the minutes to reflect that.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Okay, committee reports. Shane, can you review the Building and Grounds Committee meeting?
Yes, we had a Building and Grounds Committee meeting this evening and we were intending to talk about three items and actually added a fourth to the conversation. John Schubolsky gave us an update on the roof projects across the district. We continue to make good progress. The administration building is well underway. You will see in tonight's board book that we have another payment. That is part one of two of the final payments for the high school. So John made the decision to hold the final payment until we can do the final walkthrough, which was an item that we discussed at one of the previous meetings. And we will see a couple of additional payments for the administration roof. We talked about track resurfacing, so we have spoken with three separate companies, two of which have submitted estimates. The third declined due to scheduling. So we are looking at spring of 2022, spring to, late spring to early summer of 2022 to do a resurfacing of the track, which is a five to seven year life coating that is currently recommended. Well, the third item that we discussed was the purchase and sighting of a digital sign. So one of the objectives that several members of the committee have had and across the district for quite some time is to install a digital sign at the entrance to the campus. So we have currently identified a sign that is four foot by six foot in diameter and would, at the top of the sign, be about 10, 10 and a half feet off of the ground. It would be located in the lot across from Curry Donut. We have been fortunate enough to have two different funding sources for this work. So we do not believe that any of those dollars will need to come out of the general fund. What I have recommended for the next meeting is that we'll share a slide to be able to show, you know, kind of a graphic for the digital sign. You know, we're very excited about this installation. This is something that has been a long time coming and I think will really be a nice welcome and, you know, face of the district as you're coming down Route 6, Tioga Avenue. So more to come on that, but that's very exciting. And then the final item that was, an issue that was raised was the condition of the soccer field, which is the field that is located near the primary center. We continue to have water drainage, water holding issues on that field. And we were asked to look at some potential solutions to improve water drainage. So John has a couple of suggestions. We're going to get someone in here to take a look at a couple of ideas and see if we can make some adjustments in the spring.
Thank you, Shayna. And I believe the factory servicing, the target timeframe we have in mind is after graduation, correct?
That's correct. Yep. And as, as Mr. Farr mentioned at the beginning, we are intending to have another Building and Grounds meeting. Our discussion topics will probably be an update on some of the items that we just talked about, as well as a discussion of the bond. So the bond was achieved in part for the roofing projects, but also for other capital projects across the district. And we need to begin the discussion of what those next steps look like. So that meeting is going to be held on November 11th at 7:00 PM.
One question I have, I was not, I was not able, Bill Proboala here, guys, sorry. One question, was anything brought up about multipurpose synthetic field? I know this issue, since I've been the extracurricular chairman and on the committee, it always seems in the spring that our fields just get in terrible shape. I know the soccer field drainage has always been an issue and I know parents and community members have brought that up. And I don't know if there's any discussion or any, I guess, desire to have discussion, especially maybe with the ESRS money to look at a synthetic field. I know there, there's a tremendous expense, but I don't know when the right time would be to have that discussion. Maybe, maybe we could look at that at a Buildings and Grounds level.
It was brought up, so there was some brief discussion about that, although this topic was toward the end of our conversation. I, I think it is perfectly reasonable for us to discuss that as an option as we're looking forward to the long-term solutions for the district. So I think it's probably appropriate for us to incorporate that conversation into an upcoming Building and Grounds Committee meetings. So I will put a pin in that one and we can include that in our conversation.
Thank you.
You bet.
Certainly, drainage can, issues can be a problem that, or a problem that can be solved. The baseball field, for instance, is usually holds up very well even in wet weather.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Moving on to new business. The Visa account is there for your review, as is the summary of Klay Services substitute fee rate. Next item will be number three. As Shane mentioned, the payment for Denver Roofing, for the high school roof, $127,244.12. We have a motion to a sec, to make that payment.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Phil, I have a question. I have a, I have a question. Now there's a motion in a second. Number three, under new business.
Yes.
Should we change that to the 5A? Because aren't we holding back some of those, that funding until?
Yes.
It's so.
It's the correct amount for, so John had shared with us in that meeting that it would be broken into two payments. So I will confirm that with him. My understanding is that that is the correct amount. The nomenclature, you know, there will probably be a six instead of a 5A and a 5B, you know.
Okay.
But I will, I will confirm that. John's on. We can make him, we can unmute John and he can answer that for us. I believe he's on. Hang on just. I believe he's on, hang on just a second. So Mr. Shapolsky, you can unmute yourself. If you could address Mrs. Bennett's question, just for clarification?
Sure, it, it should be a 5A and a 5B shade.
So John, can you just confirm the 147,244? That, is that the correct amount for 5A?
It is, yes.
So the dollar amount is right. Do we want to restate the motion to indicate that that is part A of that payment? Or do we feel like it stands and we'll just have a 5B in the next one?
We can restate the motion if folks are willing. I forget who made the motion in a second, but are you willing to accept a change to make that number 5A?
Yes.
Thank you Shayna. And was it Holly or Billy that made the second?
I think it was Mr. Widener.
Yes, it'll be okay if that's what you want to do with it.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, Carolyn, can you give us a roll call please?
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes, and like to thank John because it was his recommendation to hold back because they have a punch list to go over with the contractor and we'll be making the final payment when he is completely satisfied. So thank you, John. Item four is a resolution to designate $2 million for purposes of Peters, Peters rate increase, that's to be the school employees pension. We have a motion to do that.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you Billy. Any discussion? This is fairly standard. Roll call please.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold? Mrs. Arnold?
Sorry, I hit the spacebar, I thought it worked, yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. Okay, item five, looking for a resolution approving the donation of seven sections of wrestling match, mats no longer needed by a wrestling team to the Tuncanic Youth Wrestling Club.
Second. Second.
Second, okay, thank you. Any discussion? I believe this is talked about in the extracurricular meeting previously. Roll call please.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. Item six is a resolution approving the student settlement agreement for student number 7433543775. Motion. Motion. I hear a motion, have a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Prabola?
Yes.
Mr. Swilly?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes, thank you. Item seven is discussion of teacher substitute pay. I know that some districts neighboring us and around the area have changed their pay, raised it to try to get their fill rate. I think discussion has been that even raising it may not actually fulfill that issue because of the shortage of teacher substitutes we have, which is being experienced across the entire state. Shane, can you, or Heather, you want to go over this?
Sure, I, I can share some information. So the slide that you see, does everybody see the slide with the various rates?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So currently the TASD daily rate is $85 per day. We requested information from Kelly Services around some of the surrounding districts. The survey of surrounding schools included the schools that you see listed there. While they did not specifically tell us what each district is paying, they were able to share with us what the rates were and what the schools are. So what you can see here is the lowest daily rate currently is $80 per day. We are at 85. Each of those blocks in gray represents one of the schools on that list. So we have a school at 90, 95, 120, and 150. And I think there's one hiding behind here on our, our screen is a little hard to read, 125. So, you know, what, what that shows is at our current position of 85, when you look at what the hourly rate is, you can see that we are below market trends and really at the bottom of, of this group of individuals. And while I don't necessarily think that our objective would be to be on the highest end, I mean, I think in general, from a wage survey standpoint, I think it is practical to target to be somewhere in the middle of the pack. You can see that over time that has changed and that has shifted. When you look at a lot of businesses in our area, you know, starting wages are often in and around the $15 range. If you were to look at $15 an hour, that would put us at a daily rate of 105. So, you know, and I think that that puts us kind of in that, that middle range. And, you know, again, I think this is a matter of both attracting and retaining. I think that we have lost ground with regards to our daily rate. And while, you know, there, there is not necessarily a perfect number, I think it is appropriate for us to consider making an adjustment at this time. And so the block that is highlighted in yellow is kind of a midpoint range that might be considered. And so I share this with you really just as a discussion topic to begin some dialogue to see if the group is interested in making a change.
I'm for one, I for one think we should, we've needed to raise a little bit for both the reasons you stated Shane, for attention and attracting. And I'd like to see that on the agenda for next meeting for a vote, please.
I believe we could vote on it tonight, right? Because we had it on the agenda as a subject.
As a discussion.
Because even the mask thing was only a discussion and then somebody made a motion on that subject.
I think the way they changed it is you have to make a motion to bring it on as, so we can make a motion on it. Doesn't matter, no matter what, I'm going to vote for it.
Yeah.
I, I, I think you need to have had it on the agenda as a, as a voting motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, I agree, let's put it on the agenda for next time, a motion to move it up to $15 an hour.
Is that what you're looking for, Bill, as well, that range?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comment? Most of those schools that I saw on that list are not that far from most of the labor pool. Elk Lake I know is doing 125, but it's a little of a haul to get there. So they would need, they kind of need to have a higher rate just to attract folks. But I, I would agree that we need to be somewhere in the middle of the pack, as Shane's pointed out, to, to keep the ones we have. I think it's a good idea. Anybody else have comments?
So what does the $15 equal out to per day, Phil?
Works out to 105, though.
That's, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
And that'll be on the agenda for next meeting for a vote, correct?
Correct. Okay. Thank you. Moving on then to item eight, discussion of in-person board meetings. Does anyone have something they want to comment about on that? What number? Thoughts on the subject?
I, I'd like to, I'd like to bring something up. I, I think we've, we've heard from the public on really both ends. I know there's a, obviously a hot topic with the masks and, and there's a lot of public input. I do believe that it's time that we try to get back to in-person meetings. I personally like the in-person dialogue. I like the in-person discussions among board members. I, I would also request that the community, we want to work with the community. We want to work with the, the school community. I would just ask that when we do these meetings in the future, that we maintain respect, we maintain order, we maintain the protocol that we have set, whether you agree or not with the protocol. I would respect that we act with class. I, I love the, the comments on the couple of meetings ago about we should all act with class and I, I believe we all need to act with class. So we have a mask mandate and that is our policy. I heard comments about, well, you can walk into Walmart or a restaurant. The issue is that the school district, we are following a mandate. So I would respectfully ask that community members that come to the meeting, respect our policy, just as if you went in the courthouse, you'd have to have a mask. If you want in an airplane, you have to have a mask. And when you go in a hospital, you have to have a mask. Whether you like it or not, that's unfortunately, or fortunately, the way it is. So I would just ask that if we do decide as a group, as a board, that we ask the community to participate with what we're requesting, that they'll be given a mask when they enter the building. They'll be asked to wear the mask during the meeting and to respect everyone else in the room and maintain order and maintain respect. I believe that if we can't do that or there's disruptive behavior, you have to understand that the whole community is watching and so are our kids. And I know Heather has brought that up in prior discussions with the consolidation. Our kids are watching. So we have to, I believe, set good examples. So with that caveat, I would just ask that if we do have the, or if this board decides that we move in that direction, we try, we invite the community to get back to the meetings, but we ask that they respect our policies and that we continue along a very peaceful and orderly meeting without disruptions. If they can't do that, if there is disruption or it just gets out of hand, we have to unfortunately shut the meeting down immediately and then just do our business at a later date. So I would just throw that out there for discussion among board members.
I agree with Bill 100%.
I totally agree with you, Bill.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on the opposite side of this because the, the order from the state gives an option for a section three exemption. We've chosen that for students in classroom during class time that they need to have a doctor's note and a 504 plan to not have to wear a mask. If we are going to require people to wear masks without being able to honor that exception and with the fact that that whole order says that you're not allowed to remove people for not wearing them, then I don't want to, that's not a mountain I'm willing to die on in order to get the business of this district done. I was at the, the craft show this weekend and half the people at the craft show weren't wearing masks. Not that I felt they should have been. I was that, you know, all the kids go to homecoming, very lax on masks. And we're going to pick this particular mountain to die on about masks with the community when there's so much gray area. If that's the route we want to take, then I would say we go into this meeting on the 11th, assuming it's going to be shut down. And it, it ends up being a waste of our time. So, you know. That's, that's where I'm at on it.
So I'm in favor of either we stay virtual or in person, we wear a mask. So that's the policy of the school. We're the ones responsible for setting the policy. So I, I, that's where my head's at with it. I'm fine with either one, we stay virtual or we go in person and we're expected to follow the policy of the school.
Well, I would say it's, I mean, I know everybody's just using the term policy, but it isn't actually a policy of the school. We had a plan that we approved that where masks were optional and then a mask mandate came out and we're just following that mandate, which allows for section three exemptions and it allows for people not to be removed for not wearing a mask if they wouldn't otherwise be removed. So.
I don't really want to create a policy of section three exemptions, Holly. So you know what I meant in terms of, you know, the, the policy. So it's the, we've been asked to follow the order, we're currently following the order. I'm not in favor of trying to figure that out for board attendees. So, you know, if folks want to attend the board meeting, it's pretty easy, they wear a mask. If they don't want to attend the board meeting, then they can follow via Zoom because we still have that as an option.
We don't have Zoom, but we have YouTube. I'm in favor of staying on Zoom.
Yeah, I, I personally think it, it's, it will be easier to manage on Zoom. We seem to get business done just fine on Zoom. Yeah, there's a few technical issues along the way, but, you know, I, I, if, you know, George asked why we're not in person, it's just, you know, that it's difficult to manage all this stuff in an effective way and still get business done. Because I, I think it ultimately detracts from what we're trying to do, which is we're trying to get the business of the school done. We're trying to move forward as best we can, so.
Well, we have a couple, we have a couple of issues here too because it's listed on the agenda as a discussion, not as a motion. And if we're not going to follow that, then we can't, technically moving back to Zoom, staying on Zoom or moving back to in-person doesn't require a vote. It didn't require a vote to come to Zoom. I, I believe that if we want to put that on the meeting as a, as a motion to be carried for the next time, fine. But I, there were a couple of things I also wanted to point out. Like when people talk about accessibility to a meeting, not everybody has a car, not everybody has a babysitter, not everybody has a lot of things they make do when they want to show up to a meeting. They make the preparations, they leave their house 10, 15, 20 minutes beforehand and make sure they can make it to the building to walk inside. If they, you know, whereas some people would have internet connectivity issues, there's public internet in our community, at the library, at Walmart, at McDonald's. I'm sure we could even work something out for the parking lot of the administration building. But if somebody's car breaks down on the way to a meeting, we don't stop the meeting. If somebody's babysitter cancels, we don't move the meeting to somebody's house. So as long as the mask issue is going to be a hot topic, I feel that we should just continue with Zoom. And apparently we can't really vote on it, vote to change anything tonight anyway.
That was a non-voting item though to begin with, wasn't it though, Holly? So.
The what?
This is a non-voting item, isn't this a, this isn't a, a voting item.
But I mean, if we're going to change something, there's got to be some kind of consensus, whether you call it a vote or not.
So can I just say one more thing? I think everybody here brings up great points on both sides. We heard about the internet issues, we heard about, you know, keeping people on Zoom and we heard about in-person. We've already had a couple of Zoom meetings. My, my request would be, let's give our community, which the board and our community and our administrators are all part of, let's give them a chance. Let's give us a chance to have a rational, respectful dialogue. And like John Burke said, get our business done in person. If it doesn't work, then at least we tried. I, I, I don't see a problem with that in the sense of, I think there's been enough community feedback and requests that we have it. But we also, I believe, whether I like it or not, there is the mask mandate, like you said, Holly. And it's, it's not the Tuncanic intrinsic decision, it's the governor, it's the DOH. And, and that's, that's all I'm going to say. I just think we can try the meeting and if it gets out of line, then we unfortunately will have to shut it down and go back to Zoom.
Anybody else?
So where does that leave us? If it's not something we vote on and.
Yeah. What kind of consensus do we want?
Does Mr. Audi have to comment on, do we have to vote on this or can we just do a straw poll? How would this work? I mean, I think we have to make a decision, I'd like to make a decision tonight. We, we were talking about it two weeks ago.
This is not a matter that's required obviously for a board vote. Generally, you would like to be able to reach a consensus on how you would move forward. So you know, I think, I think you take it out and have your conversation and at best you have a straw poll, but there, there's no need to have a formalized vote. There's no requirement on that.
Thank you, John.
So for back in person, if we decide to do that, we just need, if we need to make sure we're crystal clear on the guidelines. You know, George brought up the matter of two minutes per item, but we made that determination several meetings ago that again, that was a, a policy that we have liberty, I believe, and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, to be able to adjust. And we've made the decision that it's four minutes before the meeting, four minutes after. So I believe that's not a violation of, of any of our, of our business. So whatever we do here, when we go back in person, I would just respectfully ask, as, as Bill said, you know, if we, if we give a chance, let's make sure that we communicate whatever policy procedure we're going to follow, we communicate that at the beginning of the meeting. And then hopefully we're all able to move forward again, operating the business of the school with following those guidelines. So I guess first, John, can you comment on the, the two minute for per topic versus the four minutes? As, as long as we're declaring that before the meeting, I believe we're okay. Is that correct?
That, that, that is correct. I, I do not interpret the rules as Mr. Yuhas does frankly. Okay. I think, I think you can have a limit of four minutes per person. And, or, or two minutes per person if you want to. You know, you can't go less than two minutes, but you certainly don't have to go more. You do not have to allow the two minutes per issue per person. That's, I'm certain of that. Nor frankly, do you have, you could set a timeframe in which you can accept public comment and then take it over to the next meeting. If you don't want to have your meetings running into the wee hours of the morning when people have to get up and have children to take care of and have jobs to go to. So there, there are, there are avenues for making the meetings productive, letting the community have their voice, which is the whole point of the meeting. But still, I'm having some reasonable guidelines around it.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Phil.
If I could say, I think we need to go back in person. I, 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 I just think that that's how it should be. And I think we should do the meeting on the 11th in person.
Okay. I, I frankly am not particularly optimistic about it, but you know, we can give it a try. See how it works.
I agree with, I agree with Rob.
And I agree with John Burke. We, we follow the same protocol that we've had, the four minutes before and then the four minutes after per person. And like Mr. Audi said, if it, if, if things get out of control or, you know, we can change as we, as we need to. But we would just ask the community, please respect our protocols and our policies.
Okay. All right, then.
Hey, Phil.
Yes.
Um, it's Lori.
Yes, Lori.
We had a couple of people in the very beginning that wanted, from the community that wanted to speak on this topic. Now that we're done with our discussion, are we going to allow them to speak on this?
I, I believe they had, everybody had the option to talk about in-person meetings at the beginning. They can speak again. I mean, nothing, it sounds like the, the consensus without a vote is that we're, we're going to try an in-person meeting. So I guess if people have anything to weigh in on that, they can use that in their four minutes at the end. That would be my recommendation as vice president, but of course it's Phil's determination.
Yeah. That's, it's only the policy. I'm fine with that. So we can move on then to additional public comments.
So before we do that, so just to be clear, we're following the current masking guideline for in-person meetings.
That's correct.
Respectfully asking everyone to wear a face covering at that meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we can provide them at the door, at the entryway. Cause maybe people will not show up with what we can provide them, and we will. I don't think that's a problem. Is it Heather?
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Heather. Okay, Mary Jean, we have anybody in the queue for a public comment?
We do. George Yuhas would like to comment. George, you are now unmuted.
Hey guys, I've been begging you. I was supposed to talk in the first four minutes about the masking thing, not in the last four minutes, because that was on the agenda item and I got, I got screwed out of that. So I liked my four, four minutes for the masking and I still have things to cover. I have another topic afterwards. I'm not looking for an exception. I'm looking for fairness. I, I was supposed to talk about that in the beginning. So somebody tell me if they're going to give me my four minutes for the masking tech, uh, conversation I was supposed to have in front of your conversation. And then I want my four minutes after. Is anybody going to give me that? John Burke, my representative, you going to help me?
I'll, I'll speak, I'll speak to that if you don't mind. If I'm not mistaken, you had your four minutes. You spoke, did you not speak?
I was supposed to talk about the mask and John Birch said it was going to happen later. We'll discuss it later. You guys wouldn't unmute me and it was on. That was meant to be talked about on an agenda item, not my comments. My comments at the end are mine and they're different business. The agenda item was supposed to be spoke. If you go back and review this.
No, we, John stated, we would be, we would be discussing it. You were asking questions and we stated that we would answer those, we, we would have our part of the discussion during the agenda item, but you had your time to talk about it in your four minutes. So.
Okay, that's fine. I, I know this is all about silencing me and I'm sorry about that. Okay. So when does my four minutes start for my end of the business? The end of the meeting comments.
Right now. Right now.
Okay, guys, listen. So you got, you guys want us to follow your policy. I want to follow your policy. This is DOH and D, and the Department of Education. It says to follow the state masking mandate. Okay, this is, you, you signed this, this is yours, this comes up. So the state masking mandate says that a school entity's obligation and also the exception, the exception is if wearing a face covering would either cause a medical condition or exacerbate one. Okay, nowhere on the state masking mandate does it say five, uh, 504 for parents. Okay. Later on, it goes into detail. It says section four, a school entity's obligation. A school entities should not enforce face covering requirements when there is a exception under section three, or it is unsafe to do so. It also should not restrain use force, forces by making up rules and regulations. That's what that means, or physically remove teachers, children, students, staff or visitors who refuse to comply with disorder when it would not otherwise be legal to do so. Or three, or C violate other laws, including state and federal anti-discrimination laws. That's your policy, guys. I don't, I don't wear a mask in federal courthouses. I don't wear a mask in our courthouse. I don't wear a mask in your school because it's allowed. Now, Bill, by accident, you're trying to say, and anybody who's saying follow your mandate and wear a mask, you guys are by, by default of not expressing the, the full mask mandate, you're, you're basically, child abuse is either acting or not acting. Being unlawful is acting or not acting. You're not reading the full mandate to everybody. The full mandate says we can be there. And the idea that you think you can stop us from coming in there, you're going to have trouble. Because if I don't go in there without a mask, you can't trespass because I'm breaking no policy. So when I go there and you try to trespass me, you cannot do it. And if you call the police and they come to arrest me or something because I won't leave, I'm not breaking a policy. I will never be disruptive. I've always been respectful. And I will not be wearing a mask and you will not trespass me from there because you can't. Now your, your principal at the high school tried to trespass my son, which inadvertently tried to trespass, uh, the, the police then tried to, a, a defying trespass. That is illegal and your solicitor is going to tell you later that you can't do that. If they're not breaking a policy, you can't, if you can't be trespassed because you're not breaking a policy, you can't stop us from coming in there. So you may want to reconsider what you're saying. I want to go back and I want to follow the policy that you're saying to follow. So let's follow the policy. Let's not break the law or give an unlawful interpretation of it because that's using force. That's using your position, the school boards to try to circumvent or rewrite this law. You're not supposed to do that. That's not the way it works. Your own construct tells you guys not to do that. A board policy and a procedure and administration regulation shall not preempt, create, sublent, expand or restrict the rights or liabilities of students, employees, residents or others within the school community beyond those established in law. The law is the mandate. That's supposed to be enforced. You guys are, are, are making an error because I'm reading it again. You can't, you can't avoid that policy. A board policy and procedure and administration regulations shall not pre- preempt, create, sublent, expand or restrict the rights or liabilities of students, employees, residents or others within the school community beyond those established in law. Your policy says we can be in there without a mask. There's an exemption on three C for causation. I will not be wearing one because it can cause me a medical condition. Therefore I'm not wearing one. And I am allowed to be in there. And the only way you can stop me is going to be by trespassing me and you cannot trespass me from that building on an open meeting. So you're better reconsider when I stop talking, what you guys are going to do. So you, you better rethink this. And, and Mr. Solicitor, if you want to jump in and tell them that I'm accurate, feel free to.
Yeah, was someone else?
Sheila Donnelly.
So before we go on, I just want to address that the objective that I have is clearly not to silence anyone. So you know, that's the whole point of listening to public comments. So my objective, and I don't think any of the other board members are in that objective as well. I, I don't want to silence. I want to be able to listen. We also need to make sure we're continuing to move forward with the business, which is why we had the debate around in person or not. So, all right, go ahead.
Thank you. When I wrote my notes tonight, I was not under the impression that I was not going to get answered. Is that still the case?
It's public comment.
Okay. Uh, I am not clear as to what Ms. Egan's job title is. It's listed as assistant superintendent and assistant to the superintendent on the district webpage. Also, was the September 16th curriculum committee meeting rescheduled? I had a conversation with my, on Monday with Ms. Egan. And from my recollection, recollection, she explained to me that meeting with the curriculum committee did indeed take place. And can someone please clarify the date of that meeting? And if there are minutes posted for that meeting? From my recall of the conversation, and I did take notes, Ms. Egan explained to me in some detail that that meeting was absolutely open to the public, but no one from the public showed. Uh, some other details I recall from that meeting was from my notes, Ms. Egan told me about the meeting that there was a review for the new math curriculum. That was discussed. And the science curriculum for K through eight.
May I, may I answer that please?
Yes.
Because I was, it's Lori Bennett. I was the one that called that meeting. That meeting never happened. It was, it was canceled. And we have not rescheduled a date yet.
Okay. Thank you very much for that information. I did.
You are.
As I, as I said, I'm going to continue my, my comments. I had a detailed conversation with Ms. Egan on Monday on the telephone. I received detailed information about a meeting that absolutely took place in her words. And it was absolutely open to the public and no one from the public showed.
Mrs. Donnelly.
Is what she told me.
Mrs. Donnelly, I was, you asked me about previous curriculum committee meetings.
I asked about the September 16th.
You asked.
Go ahead.
You asked me when committee meetings are scheduled. I had told you that that one was postponed and we wouldn't be having it. You asked me when the next one would be. I said to you, the only time we typically have them is when we are passing curriculum such as the science curriculum meeting that the committee had and the math curriculum committee meetings that they had. The other time that they do have committee meetings is when we're talking about a draft textbook.
Who is this speaking, please?
I said to you.
Who is this speaking, please?
Curriculum committee meeting we have was open to the public and nobody had attended. That is not the same meeting that Mrs. Bennett requested.
Who is this speaking, please? Who was this?
That was Mary Jean Egan.
Ms. Egan? Okay. That is not, that is not what I recalled from my notes. I was specifically speaking about the September 16th meeting that you have on your calendar that it says TBD, to be determined. That was the one I was referring to, and that's what I have in my recollection that you stated to me on the telephone that that meeting had already been rescheduled and it had already happened because I wanted to go to it and I missed it. So I just wanted to clarify that meeting has not happened.
That meeting has not happened, no. And you asked me when the next one would be and I said, we don't have any curriculum theme written at this time since we just did the math and the science. And we don't have any textbooks. So I didn't see a need for a curriculum committee meeting, but that would be up to the committee itself.
So what meeting was it that you were talking about where there was a review of math and science and that no one showed, no one from the public showed?
And speak up here because I'm the chairperson of the curriculum committee. So I think we've had two meetings this year, both of them were public. I can't, I, I'm sure we can look up what month they were in, but it was.
It was one in May.
Yeah. So we had one of them, I think that was the math one, and then sometime over the summer was the science one.
That wasn't the one that Ms. Egan was talking to me about, but not from my notes.
We have not, we have not had any other curriculum meetings, any curriculum committee meetings, not even a, not even that I'm aware of, any curriculum committee emails since before that September 16th meeting was originally scheduled. So there has not been any action on the curriculum committee side since then.
Okay. Okay. I've been able, unable to find any public posting about the meeting that I was discussing with Ms. Egan.
We typically don't have minutes for those committee meetings.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question regarding Mr. John Burke. Again, this is a question I suppose that I will not be able to have answered, but I wanted to bring up. He is, uh, just wanted to get this clarified. He's a district board member, a human resource employee. He's married to a teacher.
Negative.
Does this compromise him being objective and pose a possible conflict of interest? For instance, if he's called upon to help resolve a conflict with faculty where his wife is involved. So those are questions that I thought I was going to be able to get answered tonight. So now they would. He is not an employee. Thank you for clarifying that. It still does not negate any of my requests for clarity. Does that make that a conflict of interest if he is married to a faculty member where he is a board member? And he is, is helping out with human resource conflicts where his wife might be involved with that. He will know it's a conflict of interest.
Mrs. Donnelly, you have about 15 seconds.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and answer that. So one, I'm not a district employee. Um, I'm a private citizen, a taxpayer in our district. Uh, my wife is employed by the district. That does not preclude me from being a board member, nor does it preclude me from being, uh, the H R E R chairperson. Obviously if I had a personal connection, whether it was my wife or anyone else in the district that I was connected with, I would recuse myself from any conversations with that. So I don't know where that was coming from, but, uh, I'm sure that, uh, John Audi, if you could please comment as well as our solicitor, because I want to take away any sort of guise of, of inappropriate behavior, um, that's being cast at me.
Yeah, I have been, um, frankly, I will say that, uh, Mr. Burke does not sit at the negotiations table. And he does not get involved in the, um, any strategy or any issue where his wife is individually, um, involved. We've made sure of that so that in, in the, I know the ethics, um, commission rules and laws. And in my tenure as solicitor, that's all I could speak to. And working with Mr. Burke, um, he has come, not even come anywhere near and any concerns of a conflict of interest. He stays out of it and, um, as, as well he should. But I will say that, um, the law allows him to vote on a, on a collective bargaining agreement, even though his wife is in the bargaining unit. And that's true of, um, I, you know, I could, any number of districts I represent. But, um, Mr. Burke clearly, Mr. I, I want, how do I want to say this? Mr. Burke would never, um, does not in any way in my, in my dealings as solicitor, um, get involved in anything that has a directed path on here with family. So that's what I would say. There's no conflict.
I want to interject. Uh, George Yuhas is the first verbal and last verbal warning for disruptive use of the chat. So future use in that fashion will result in you being removed from the meeting. Also, George, our, John Burke goes above and beyond to make sure he's not doing anything that can even be seen as being improper, not to mention that he is. as being improper, not to mention that he is overwhelmingly elected by his constituents every time he's up for election. So if they felt as a group that there was some kind of a conflict there, I am more than certain people would take action to rectify that situation. So.
I agree. Do you have anybody else in the chat?
Shireen Knight, you're able to unmute yourself.
Hi. Okay, so I just sat here and listened to Mr. Yuhas and everybody's sitting back acting like he's, he's wrong and he's crazy, but I really do believe that Mr. Yuhas is correct. I have attended additional meetings outside of these board meetings with Pennsylvania lawyers as well as as he has. So I know the other side of this. I've heard the other legal argument to this, this masking, this mandate, everything that Tuncanic has done compared to other schools and what what is, could be considered lawful. I guess in this meeting, I've got a couple of things that have struck me as odd. We've got the vice president of our board saying that she went to a craft fair this this week and there was everybody in there. Only half the people in the school had masks. So I guess my question is, I find that very hard as a taxpayer to say, okay, yeah, let's open it up, which I agree with. Let's open it up. We can have the community in there with no masks. But hey, if you want to come to a board meeting, you better put a mask on your face. So I guess that is very confusing and very, it's like you pick and choose when you want us to have masks in your building. That doesn't make sense. I could understand like if everybody had to wear masks all the time and you were doing that, but you are not consistent. So I don't understand how everybody in the community can be on there on a Saturday and a Sunday, we can go to the school, same same atmosphere. We can all go there without our masks on, but God forbid on a Tuesday night or Wednesday night, we show up for a school board meeting. We all have to have our masks on. Doesn't make any sense to me. Secondly, as you probably are all aware, the Pennsylvania courts have, you know, taken this, they they're ruling on this mandate and to see what's going to come back on this. My question to the board right now is if this ruling comes back and masks are no longer required at school, they they shoot down this mask mandate, what's going to happen with Tuncanic School the day that they say that? Like if they come out tomorrow and say, hey, we have a ruling, this mandate's gone, what is our board prepared to do for our children? Will, 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 will Tuncanic School District get rid of the mask mandate then? Because that's what you told us before. Oh, we're just going to follow this until it gets shot down. Well, if it gets shot down before the next meeting, right, let's say before November 11th, what will you do? That's my question to you guys.
We will follow the law.
So, so am I correct then? If they shoot down this mask mandate, children will be returning to school with no masks optional, just mask optional? Because I certainly believe children have the right to wear a mask if they want to. That's never a question at all in my mind. However, if they do not want to and the mask mandate is no longer enforced, will you allow children the opportunity to not wear masks in school?
We'll follow the law.
My, my understanding right now is that we have a plan that we elected to follow, which it had a provision for following a mandate if it came out. If that mandate went away, there would definitely need to be some discussion by the board because my understanding would be that it goes reverse automatically back immediately as soon as that mandate is effectively gone to our, our voted on plan. That's nothing to say that the board can't have a vote to then put up some other, either partial or full mask.
That's what I'm asking. If that happens, that's why I'm asking this right now. If that happens, if we get a decision, which I expect will happen before the next two weeks, what will the board do? Will you allow it to default back to the previous optional mask? Or will you be requiring that everybody, will you do something different?
I think what Holly said.
I can always speak for myself, but because masks were optional before the mandate, I would go back to masking optional.
I always speak for. And I think, if I may, I think Holly answered. I think the board would be willing to absolutely sit down, have a discussion. And I would agree with Rob Perry. We would most likely revert back to the optional. But it's, it's the mandate that I believe is locking us in right now.
Is that going to have to be after another school meeting? Let's just say hypothetically, they come out with a ruling tomorrow. Are we, are children going to have to wait until the 11th to get an answer for that or are you playing?
I think, I think we're going to banter this back and forth and this really isn't a, I think you heard the answer. We'd be willing to sit down as fast as we could.
Well, I don't, I would say we don't even have to sit down because it would revert back to our plan, which was voted on by this board unanimously that masks were optional. So we would need to take another op, we would need to take another vote to change that plan if the mandate went away.
I agree with Holly. I think the mandate goes away. We go back to what we voted on, which is optional masking. But again, that's just my opinion.
I don't think it's opinion, Rob. I think that's just the way it's set up because we had, the plan was a voted item. So if we want to change that plan, then we'd have to vote to change the plan. Because we did not vote to change the plan when the mandate came out.
I agree with Holly. I'm just not.
Next person?
Person is Terry. You are unmuted. You can speak now.
Thank you. First of all, I would just like to say that I believe the board is going above and beyond trying to get us back to public meetings of which I was attending. And I, for one, will tell you, there might have been 10 people there. So saying that Zoom doesn't work, your numbers certainly prove different. I also think that you've already been challenged and threatened after you gave the public the option to act adult and kind to each other. And it has already started and you haven't even had an in-person meeting. So I just ask, if you truly have what's right for the kids, if that's what's in your heart and that's what you're truly doing, then stop threatening people, stop challenging people, just follow the rules for now. We make our children follow rules so that they grow up to be upstanding adults in our community. So we need to give them that to look at so that they have something to follow. And when the board is offering to attempt to go back to an in-person meeting and you already come out of the gate challenging them, that makes me think that I'm going to, and it's, I'm not saying it's a waste of my time to go to the board meeting. So please don't turn my words around, but it's a waste of time for me to go to the board meeting because I know right now as an educated adult that it's going to get shut down. That's not fair to the rest of us. One person or two people who want to challenge something that the board has no control over, just put a mask on for an hour so you can be heard for God's sakes if that's what you really want. But I think you just, some of them just want to fight and I applaud you guys for offering them the opportunity to open it back up. They keep pushing you for an answer. Why was it closed? They perhaps should go back and re-watch that board meeting. I was there. That was really disgusting that the rest of the world can go on the internet and see Tuncanic acting a fool because that's what happened that night. There's no reason for it. If you really want it in person, just follow the rules. It's not hard. And the second thing I would like to say is, John Burke, I am very sorry that people question your integrity. I have known you for many years outside of the board as a coach for my child in the community. And I think you always use the utmost integrity, as do the people on this board. So I just wanted to get that out there. That's really all I have to say. I just wish they'd stop challenging and threatening and just, we have to go with it until it's over. That's all we can really do. It's not your fault, so don't take it out on you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chat room?
No, there is nobody else.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
I know I have one comment. I have one comment if I may.
Yes, Bill.
I don't know about you guys. I felt a little uncomfortable tonight when I heard that I'll be in trouble if I do something. I just want to note for the record that this is a recorded meeting and I didn't feel comfortable hearing that. I really want our security forces to be at that meeting and I, I'm ashamed to even mention this. But it does bring to light possibilities that I, that never entered my mind. So I'm just going to request that security is at the next meeting when we ask our community to act respectful. But I was a little concerned when I heard if we do something, we are going to be in trouble. I didn't know how to exactly interpret that.
It is vague. It is vague. All right, thank you. If any other board member has a comment? If not, then we'll be adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.